Good evening, everyone. We'll call to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, March 11th, 2020, 6:00 PM. I'd like to ask Terry Arnold, Pastor of the Pentecostal Church of East Ridge, if he'll come forward, provide our invocation and lead us in our pledge. Everyone will stand.
Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight very thankful for all your many blessings upon our lives personally, our families, and upon our sitting community. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings of God and the protection of the Lord and the healing of the Lord upon our lives. Thank you for touching our seniors and all those who have been afflicted through this time of pandemic. We still give you praise through it all. We thank you, Lord, for our leaders tonight, our mayor, our vice mayor, and all of our city council. And Lord, as they deliberate tonight, we ask your blessings upon them, give them wisdom and guidance. May your Holy Spirit lead us closer to you. In the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say it is, it is nice to see people here. Welcome, everyone, for coming back. We just opened up to the public this, this council meeting, so it's great to see faces in our council chambers. I will mention that for those in attendance, we're following COVID recommendations for seating and social distancing. So we, we appreciate y'all again for being here tonight. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Hilton.
Here.
Councilmember Witt.
Here.
City Manager Dorsey.
Here.
City Attorney Litchford.
Here.
All right, underneath, the next item is the Employee Years of Service Awards. First meeting of every month is set aside to recognize those employees that have dedicated service to our city and have reached a milestone. Proud to say that we have four that actually met milestones as of the February last month. Those would be Eric Bowen, 25 years. Matt Tally, 15 years. Diane Qualls, 10 years. And Myra Miracle, five years. So congratulations to them. Thank you for your service. I will be probably Monday, when Chris gets back, we'll get in with everyone and provide them with their service award, their service pin, and their monetary check for their service. Again, if it wasn't for our great employees, we wouldn't be the city that we are, and we appreciate them. I will move to item four, consent agenda. I assume everyone's had an opportunity to read the minutes of the February 25th, 2021 council meeting and the Declaration of Surplus Property. I'll entertain a motion for consent agenda.
I can make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion, corrections? I seen a roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. All right, we'll move to item five, Communications of Citizens. This is an opportunity for any citizen or business owner within our city that they would like to come before the council and bring forth a question, statement, or something. This is their opportunity to do so, excuse me. We have one name on the list, David Tyler. So if you'll come forward and state your name and give us your address.
Put this thing on.
Yes.
Hi, I'm David Tyler, I live at 4701 Fountain Avenue. As many of you may know, I am the Vice President of the Optimist Club. And since the beginning of the pandemic, our members have taken great precaution in conducting our meetings, even moving them outside during the thick of the pandemic. And when it has since gotten darker earlier and colder, we've moved it indoors. In our last couple of meetings, several members have expressed great interest in moving back to our original location of our meetings at the East Ridge Community Center, which the city was gracious enough to allow us to use. Some of our members have expressed frustration that there are basketball games allowed to go on there. However, it is my understanding that is due to contractual obligations with that organization. I am here on behalf of the members to say that we look forward to having our meetings once again at the community center so that we have a place that is more befitting to our guest speakers that we do hold and allow us to have more space than some of the current places that we have been using, such as some of the restaurants here in East Ridge, like Fernando's. I just came here to ask the council, you know, to please consider allowing us use of that. I know that Governor Lee signed Executive Order 70 back in December, limiting gatherings to 10 people or fewer. However, since late January, he did remove that, that executive order. Also, many of our members have already had the COVID-19 virus and even more still have had at least one shot of the vaccine. They feel that, that it's safe for them to return to in-person meetings. Some of our more at-risk members will still have the ability to zoom in remotely, and we want to accommodate all members of the Optimist Club to allow them to come back. Thank you so much for allowing me to come speak. I don't want to press the issue much, but you know, like I said, the members have expressed great interest in letting us come back. Thank you so much, Mayor and the council, and have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler. And thank you for, you had sent an email to myself and Chris earlier, and we've, we've chatted. And I don't know, Chris, if you'd like to.
Well, I, I, David also sent you a reply to the email late this afternoon. I'll, I'll talk some about this when I, when I give my report.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, thank you.
To try to accommodate, absolutely.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. I don't have anybody else on the list, but I'll see if anyone in the audience, if anyone else would like to come forward. More than welcome to. I see no one, so then I will move to Communication of Councilmembers. I'll start on the ladies' side. Councilmember Hilton.
Yeah, I see Adams here tonight. I wanted to thank him. I noticed you guys had cleared, cleared up the outer perimeter of the track down at Camp Jordan. It looks really good. And thank you for that. The, the park itself is looking really good, too, so, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cagle.
No, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. I don't have, unusual, I don't really have anything to, to, to say today. However, I will say to keep Mr. Dorsey and his dad and his family and his thoughts. He's not with us tonight because he is out of town. His dad is in the hospital recovering, so keep Chris and his dad and his family in, in your thoughts and your prayers. And now I'll hand it to Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Yeah, I made it right here at 5:59, so I got back nice and quickly. Got a couple of quick things to talk about. The parking lot out at, out there at Camp Jordan, it is paved now. The next step is to go ahead and get a stripe, so we're excited about that, that's coming up. On Monday, the liquor store applications will be due at noon on daylight savings time. I believe that kicks in on Sunday.
That's true.
So we will, I'll be there for that. We also have put in for a, a grant for a dog park. It's called the Dog Park Dash Grant. Randy Boyd's, who's now, who ran for governor, who's now, I believe he's the Chancellor of Tennessee, President, excuse me, of the University of Tennessee. And he gives, and they do these $25,000 grants to help cities build these dog parks. So we're in the process, and I think you, you've probably, some of you have seen the surveys we've been putting out. That's one of the components to be able to do the grant. It just opened at the very beginning of this month to be able to apply for those. We are looking at a site over on Springdale to do this. We think that is a, a good site for us to do this. But I also want to mention, I have been talking with Vice Mayor Chauncey, and he has an excellent idea to maybe still go ahead and add a second one over here behind Bryant School. We have, I guess it used to be baseball fields there, right, a long time ago? To be able to put one there, and he's got some good ideas on that, may have a, a way to have most of the cost covered with some businesses that work on it. So I want to thank him for that, too. I know we got to do some more talking on that, Vice Mayor, but I wanted to throw that out, too, as well. The last thing I want to talk about is real quickly, the, the, the group meetings and things at the community center. I talked to the mayor earlier today, and I, this was spurred on by the, the email that we got from Mr. Tyler earlier today. And we have been looking at slowly being able to open up meetings at the community center. We have a couple of things we have to look into first. And one of the things is obviously the governor's order, which we know where that is now. We also want to make sure that we are keeping the safety of all the participants in mind. And with part of that, there are some legal issues that I need to get with the city attorney on. Because like, as you know, there's an item on the agenda later tonight about waiving the fees at the arena for a car show. As far as I know, none of the organizations that use our community center have an agreement with the city. We need to put something together with that to also waive any liability. What happens if some people get there and somebody contracts COVID and something serious happens? What liability does the city have with that? So we, we need to look at having some sort of agreement to be able to use with the, these organizations. We're happy to have them, but we just need to look at the, the legal liability for the city on that. In addition, depending on the nights that they might be able to come, it's, it's not as easy as it used to be, at least for the next few months where they, you know, in the past, they would just come, use the building and leave. We would have to, after they are done, we would have to have staff there to disinfect the entire room. We have to have staff there on call, which we're having to pay, even if they use them for free, we're having to pay staff. So there may be things where we may have to look at certain days of the week or work with some of these organizations to have them there when we do have paid staff that's there that can clean it, rather than having to pay for staff that might not normally be there, because it's not as easy as, like I said, opening up the room and leaving. So those are just some of the considerations. We are looking forward to sometime in the future being able to have these organizations back in meeting in person, but we just need to, to make sure that we follow some of those protocols and some of those steps to make sure that, you know, we, we follow the COVID-19 restrictions that are still in place and that, sort of like we do for the other contracts that we have at to make sure that we're following the protocol we need to, but we're definitely looking into that, and hopefully soon we'll be able to, to announce something on that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, sir. And thank you for reminding about daylight savings. So also change your smoke and fire detector batteries. It's that time to do that when the time changes. All right, we'll move to old business. Item A, ordinance number 1144.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the zoning regulations and the zoning map of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, so as to rezone the property located at 6205 Ringo Road, tax map number 169L-F-040 from R1 Residential District and M2 Light Industrial District to C2 General Commercial District.
This would be the second and final reading.
I see Kenny's on here, but I don't know if he's gonna, if he's muted, I heard a lot of kids in the background. I don't know if you want to talk about this, Mark. This is basically the, the second reading for the, the property that's, I call it the, next to the printing company right there on Ringo Road, where they're putting the parcels together. It was jumbled up with a couple of different zoning. Mike, you might, I mean, Vice Mayor, you might be able to speak on that, too. A couple of different zoning areas were in there, and so we're just trying to clean that up for them, for that piece of property. If there's anything you'd like to add, Vice Mayor, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think the, back during the planning commission meeting, we, we had one resident that showed up. Actually, just, she emailed me to voice some concerns. She wasn't opposed to the rezoning request. And the, the applicant basically said that, said that, I, I think that, well, the resident, her main concern was if there was going to be any construction or any kind of intrusion on her property that she just asked that they be respectful to her, her property. And the applicant assured her that, that there was not going to be, I think there's a building right there that backs up to her property that they plan on demolishing. And then if they do demolish that property, there's a 20-foot landscape buffer that's going to be between her property and the, and the commercial, a, a, any type of development, if that goes there. They don't have, they didn't plan on, there's no plans to do any development there at the time, but he, they did assure her that i- if there was, and that building was to be tear down, that they would be respectful and honor that 20-foot landscape buffer. So the planning commission did vote unanimously to approve and to clean up the rezoning.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 1144.
I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance 1144 passed second and final reading. We'll move to item 9A, ordinance number 1145.
An ordinance to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the fiscal year 2021 operating budget, ordinance number 1129, for various expenditures in the general fund and drug fund using fund balance.
All right, now I believe everyone's got an updated ordinance.
Yes.
In their packet with the, the correction, is that?
The numbers didn't change, it was just the title on the drug.
The title, okay. Who? Ms. Qualls, are you going to?
If you remember, I'll discuss.
Thank you.
If you remember at the last meeting, council approved the hiring of two police officers and purchasing two police cars. So this budget amendment, it will do the salaries for three months, and then also the purchase of the police cars with some of the installation coming out of the drug fund. And so you'll see where I'm saying where we're using, use of fund balance, 110,144 in the general fund, and then 34,722 for the equipment in the drug fund. If you, you're probably wondering, well, how have we spent designated 666,000? If you remember when we approved the budget, we had 646,000 that we were gonna, we're moving to the capital projects for the two grants. One is a splash pad, 500,000. The other was 146,000 for the multimobile. And then, and I believe it was October, Officer Johnson was involved in a brick. He was hit. Thankfully, he was okay, but it totaled our police car. So we had to use $20,597 to finish out paying for the car. We got insu-, we got insurance money, but it wouldn't pay for the, for a brand-new car. And so with this, it's going to have us using 776,741 dollars out of the fund balance, which if you remember, our fund balance is over $5 million right now. Questions?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll entertain a motion for ordinance number 1145.
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 1144.
Forty-five. Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Witt and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? I seen a roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Ordinance 1145 passed first reading. Move to item B, Resolution 3123.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, approving the application for an acceptance of the fiscal year 2022 Tennessee Highway Safety Office's High Visibility Enforcement Grant.
Do you value?
Yes, Mayor, Council, this grant is a $5,000 total grant. At least 1,000 of that has to be spent on overtime, and then the rest can be for equipment. What we plan to do is to buy two moving radar units, which would be just over 37,000 total for the two, and then the remaining $1,300 would be used for traffic enforcement on overtime for officers.
3,700?
3,700 and, and 1,300, yes.
Okay.
All right.
Buying two?
Sure.
We're just buying two?
Two, this time, yes.
Senior here said three, so.
Yeah, the letter, the memo said three.
Yeah. Yeah, we wanted to do three, but we can't, we can't do that and stay under the 5,000 with the $1,000 we have to have for the overtime. That's a requirement from THSO.
Thank you, sir. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3123.
Make motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Vice Mayor Chauncey and a second by Councilmember Hilton. Do we have any discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll remove to item C, Resolution number 3124.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to waive the fee for use of Camp Jordan Arena for the East Ridge Need Child Fund to host a classic car cruising fundraiser.
Yes, Mayor and Council, the East Ridge Need Child Fund approached us a couple of weeks ago and asked about waiving the fees for the, the arena to, to host a classic car show for a fundraiser for, for their organization to help with the, the purchase of Christmas gifts and, and whatnot later in the year. And staff recommends waiving the facility fee for the East Ridge Need Child Fund to have their event.
Thank you, sir. Thank you both for your involvement and your participation. Great cause, great effort. I'll entertain a motion for Resolution 3124.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Councilmember Witt. Do we have any discussion?
Mayor, I just wanted to say it's, the date on that, I think, is Friday, June 25th, so it's still a ways off.
Thank you. I was about to mention that. See no discussion? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton. Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Thank you again, ladies.
Thank you, guys, for your support.
Awesome. All right, we'll move to item D, Resolution number 3125.
Initial resolution authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $750,000 general obligation bonds of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee.
Welcome, sir.
I'm here on that resolution. I'm Scott Gibson with Commonwealth Securities.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Chris, do you want to, or Diane, do you want to start? Do you want to?
I'll let Chris start.
Okay.
Diane, you were supposed to, that's why you're sitting next to the mayor. The, the purpose of what we're doing is I will start, Diane, and then I'll let you chime in. The, the purpose of what we're doing here is we, we were looking at ways to refinance some of our, our debt. Sort of like when you have a house and you want to refinance your mortgage, because you can get a, you can take benefit of, take advantage of lower interest rates and things of that nature. Diane was looking into this for us as well and contacted a, a few, a few companies to see what options there might be out there for us, especially the, you know, we have a couple, and I don't have the, the interest rates on some of the bonds in front of me, Diane, I apologize. But we, we also talked to Commonwealth Securities, who's well-known and does a lot of work with municipalities in Tennessee, and talked to them about ways we could refinance many, many of our debt and keep the same payment structure. What I mean by that is we have some debt that may, that may roll off like in 2024, and we may have other debt that may roll off a few years after, you know, just because the way it goes. So we would hopefully be doing this exact same thing with this debt. And I don't want to steal his presentation, but that's why we ask Commonwealth Securities to be here and to talk about it and take advantage of the interest rates, especially the ones that we have that are variable interest rates, the debt, and be able to take advantage of some savings. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Diane? I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I'm sorry.
Okay. Did he hand it off to you, Diane, or is there?
I did.
You handed it off to Josh.
Thank you. So the initial resolution that you have in front of you, it is just a notice resolution to give up to a 20-day protest period, because we are considering, if you approve this, converting a couple of cap outlay notes to bonds. And under state law, that notice has to be given. And then the second resolution that's on, the next resolution's on your agenda would be actually the main bond resolution that would authorize this proposed plan that I'm going to discuss with you. So I just handed out this funding analysis. And so I wanted to kind of just quickly walk through it. Page one of that analysis is all the city's debt. You have about $1,223,000 due this year in principal and interest, and then 210,000 in 2045. And there's a graph on page two. And we're going to refer back to this graph at the end. You can see where we are not extending the debt and where we are keeping the payments the same. And then on page three of your debt, you have about 7.4 million that is variable and 3.7 that is fixed. So you have a very large percentage of variable rate debt. And in this low-interest rate environment, it would be our recommendation to lock in a fixed rate versus having a variable. And two, some of your variable rate debt, we can actually lock in a fixed rate that is actually lower than the rate on the variable and actually save money. So not only are we saving money, but we're taking the risk off the table. So if the rates ever go up, you won't be hit with a higher rate. So it's a two, two-part advantage. So the estimated savings of this refinancing is on page four. We're looking at about $900,000. Most of that is real dollars. There's a couple of dollars in there that are to be 100% open. We have used a budget rate of 3% on a couple of the true variable rates that you have. You're probably paying close to one and a half today, but that rate's going to go up and down. Historically, you have budgeted 3%, so if you look at it versus the budget, there'll be some savings there. And actual dollars that amount, I don't know where we would end up. You can't really know until you get five or 10, 10 years down the road and look back and see where the rates were. But we think in this prudent, it's prudent in this interest rate environment on a couple of these loans to take that risk off the table, lock in fixed rates. And then on the other three, two of the five are true variable, three of the five are not only variable, but they're fixed. So we're going to actually save about, like I said, $900,000. So on that page, if you look at the bottom statistic, at the very bottom, it says true interest cost, and we're right at 1.85%. So I want to point that out, because that is where we estimate we can lock the rates in. So i.e., you're going to be able to take all your variable rate risk off the table. You're going to be able to take bonds that you're paying up to 4.05% on, refinance them, lock them in at less than 2% for the life of the loan, all the way through 2039, and, and save money all at the same time. So that is the proposed plan. The new amortization schedule that we estimate's on page five, and then the bonds we're paying off are on page six and seven. So you can look down. The first two are the true variables. You're paying 2.76 on one, 2.68, 2.55, and 4.05 on the 2018 bond. So all that will come down to a rate less than 2%. And there's an estimated sourcing uses on page eight. The new debt service is on page nine after estimated post issuance. And there's a graph on page 10, which I really want to point out, as we mentioned. So the black line represents where you were on the first graph, kind of where you are today, if we don't do anything. And then obviously, this gray would be the new debt. And as you can tell, we're below the line. And then obviously, this gray would be the new debt. And as you can tell, we're below the line because we're saving money. And the, it pretty much is matches up to where we were, so we're not really extending any debt or anything. So it's the same amortization schedule, just a lower rate and at a fixed rate. And then the last page shows after we're all done, all your debt will be locked in, true fixed rates versus having some variable exposure. That would be our recommendation. And like I said, the initial resolution on your agenda is part one to move forward with that, to convert, there's a couple of little capital notes to convert those to bonds. We will not be extending those payments. We'll just be locking in a lower rate. And then the second resolution would actually implement all the facets of making this come, making this happen for the city. I, I covered a lot of information real fast. Does anyone have any questions?
Go ahead, sir.
All righty. Page one, where you said that this was all of our debt.
Payable from, this is all the debt payable basically from city taxes, yes.
So this is every loan that we go for right now?
Uh, yes, sir, based on the information we have. And all those loans are listed underneath there on page one and the amount outstanding. So you got basically eleven point nine million dollars of principal outstanding.
Diane, I think there's one that's not in there, right? The brand new one.
Yeah, we do have a brand new one. We haven't done but one draw on and we're in a three-year on that. There's also the one two thousand fifteen that we cannot refund until twenty twenty-five.
That, that fifteen is included in this analysis, but the new loan is not since.
Because we, we haven't even really gotten any money on that. And then we have one small one that we're fixing to pay off that was on some police cars.
Yes, that.
That one wasn't even.
The, the fifteen loan, the fifteen bond issue is included in the numbers and the graph, but we're not refinancing it because it's, it's not refinancable today, and there's no savings. So we're only tackling things that we can save money on or reduce risk on. So there, but the, the graph at the end reflects the two thousand fifteen bond too, so.
I was just reading where it says total estimated outstanding debt, so I noticed that that one wasn't in there, so.
You are, the new one, the new is not in there, but the fif, but the fifteen is.
So we come up with eleven million nine there on page one. And back around page nine, we're twelve million two.
Yes, sir. So if you go to page eight.
Okay.
We have estimated the cost. Hopefully, they'll come in lower, but we missed, estimated the cost. Nine million eighty-five thousand of new debt to pay all the old debt off, which is eight point eight six one, six seven one million eighty-four, nine ninety-five cost, and then a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three thirty-four for the budget amount of the underwriters discount. So we're going to propose to bid these bonds out. So just like you would bid out paving or police cars or whatever and get the lowest price, we are going to put these bonds out to bid at competitive public sale. And so the winning bank or institution like Raymond James or RW Baird or Bank of America or Merrill Lynch or something will submit a bid, and whoever the winning bid is will be, have two, two components to it. They'll have the actual interest rates. So the lowest one's there, and then they have a fee built in when they submit their bid. That is known as the underwriters discount. And so we have budgeted a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars for that number. That number could be higher or lower, but I will tell you, when we do the calculation, we will factor in their underwriters discount and the note, and their actual interest rates that they're bidding. And whichever one generates the lowest of those two numbers is the winning bidder. And so we will award the bonds to whoever, whatever firm submits the lowest bid. So you are, you will get the lowest interest rates available on that date and time that we sit, submit the bids out there and get them back and the institutions that bid, so.
And then the payoff will be twenty forty-five.
We are not extending any payments, so the current final payment is twenty forty-five on your debt. However, the debt we're refinancing is actually only to two thousand thirty-nine. So the two thousand forty-five is the final payment, but that is on the two thousand fifteen bonds, and we're not refinancing those. So we'll, you, you can tackle that at some point in the future. But the debt we're refinancing on goes through thirty-nine, and the new debt only goes through thirty-nine. If you look at the savings page on page one, you'll notice it only goes through two thousand thirty-nine. Or excuse me, the page four, page four. It spoke there. So two thousand twenty-two through two thousand thirty-nine. We will not be impacting this year's budget that ends June thirty, two thousand twenty-one. All these payments are already built into your budget. We'll only be refunding debt that's going to fall in next year's budget all the way through two thousand thirty-nine. Like I said, and we'll, it's just, this was mentioned, basically the same payment schedule. We'll put it right back like it is. It's just going to have lower interest rates, so your payments will be less on an annual basis.
That's my question.
Okay. So I'm glad you pointed it out because one of the other things I want to point out also on those two pages, you mentioned the increase of about three hundred thousand on the principal, but notice on the, the total payment at the end, it goes down almost a million dollars. It was sixteen five, and it'll end up being fifteen five.
That's correct, so.
So it was a substantial increase in total payment.
The fees are built in, which is why you have a little more principal at the end. But the total principal and interest cost ends up being about nine hundred thousand dollars less than where you are today. So that interest component.
Yes.
And if you, it's just like a refinancing a home mortgage, you know, if you lower your home mortgage, there's usually some closing costs, about two percent. Typically, for a home mortgage, it's about two percent for a bond issue. So we're a little bit more than that because we put a little bit more in there for the underwriters discount, just to be conservative. But, you know, it's, it's in that two, two and a half percent range. So it's, the numbers are just like a home mortgage, except it's got more zeros, pretty much is what it amounts to.
In, in one other question, I'm sorry, I usually try to go last. You mentioned also risk. And in going through this, I realized that we also had some, some bonds that could be called at any point in time, highly unlikely, but it could be. Do you want to talk a little bit about that risk?
Sure. So, for example, this two thousand fifteen, your two thousand fifteen loan, your two thousand eighteen loan, your two thousand seventeen loan, all are all are, all are variable rate debt. They were marketed as kind of fixed rate, and you think they're fixed rate, but they're really not. What they are is they are a variable rate loan that is outstanding, that has a rate lock on it for a certain time period, five to seven years. So you've been paid, you will pay the same rate for the first five or seven years. But when that put date or that reset date, put date is the same as reset, when that reset date comes around, you, the bank can set the rate at the same rate again. They can lower the rate, or they can raise the rate. So by definition, if the rate can change, it is variable rate debt. And so you have variable rate debt. Now, like I said, the rate's not going to change on some of these for a couple of years until you get to the next quote, put date or reset date. But we will be taking all that risk off the table. These, these bonds will be traditional fixed rate bonds that we're proposing. And so once we sell the bonds and lock the rates, those rates will never change. The only time they will change is if you decide to go in and pay them off early, which will be, there'll be some time period that we will go seven to ten years before we, you have the opportunity to refinance them again. But once that time period is up, you can pay them early, or we may come back here and try to save some money again if rates are lower. But I'm not sure we'll be able to refinance debt that's probably going to be locked in at sub two percent, but we may have the opportunity, who knows?
So thanks for the explanation, but I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Claus, there are also some of these bonds have a clause that could be called and to be paid.
Under the put date, the bank can actually, if you hit a put date and the bank says, we don't want to deal with you anymore, you have to write a check for the full amount of the debt.
Exactly. And that was
Yes.
Very enlightening and disturbing when I found out we had something like that previous administration.
Yeah, so I have a, just to highlight that point, I had a meeting earlier this week with a client. They have a bank, same kind of loan. The bank called and said, we do not want to renew, renew the loan. They called about less than, about a thirty days ago. And that client is going to have to come up with fifteen plus million dollars by the end of this month. And they voted to refinance and sell fixed rate bonds. So we have been jumping through multiple hoops. We're actually selling bonds next week so that we can close on the deal before the end of the month, so we can write a check for fifteen plus million or out of a bond issue versus out of their account, which they don't have the money. So we are, you know, I'm not suggesting that you're going to be in that boat someday in the future, but it could happen.
Yeah. But it eliminates that possibility. All right. Any other questions?
I'll be, yeah, any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, so. And I apologize for getting here at the last minute. I was
You're all good.
I was in Murfreesboro, Shebbyville, Tullahoma, Manchester, and now East Ridge today, so I've had a long day.
Well, you ended in a great play.
I did, I did, except for the traffic coming through Chattanooga.
All right, I'll entertain a, a motion for resolution three one two five.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution three one two five.
I'll second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember Witt and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any other discussion? I see none. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Thank you. We'll move to item E, resolution three one two six.
A resolution authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, and the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed nine million, two hundred thousand and one or more series, making provisions for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, and interest on the bonds.
Thank you, sir. And this is the second part of, of this process. So I'll entertain a motion for resolution three one two six.
So. I'll second.
Yeah, a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion?
One question.
Yes, sir.
The nine million eighty-five thousand, the cost of the loan is two hundred twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars.
That again.
All right, the nine million eighty-five thousand, which is a serious twenty twenty-one refunding bond.
That's what we are estimating the final size will be, yes.
Okay, so that's the cost of the loan.
That's the total amount needed to pay off all the old debt plus the cost.
Two hundred and twenty-three thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Oh, the, the two numbers added together, eighty, yes, that, that would be the, that would be the total cost and underwriters discount, yes.
Okay. So that's where we come up with the ninety-two thousand, I mean, the nine point two, okay.
Well, actually, we come with nine point two. I think we'll probably only need nine million eighty-five, but we did the resolution bigger in case we miss something or that, when we get the final payoff amounts from the bank, that we have enough size to make sure everything's sized correctly, so.
The thing come my eye when you add those two together, it comes up over nine point two, so.
Any other? Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes. Thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
All right, we will move to item F, is also was a addition to your packet. Resolution number three one two seven. Do you have it?
Yeah. A resolution of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, authorizing the city manager to purchase playground and splash pad equipment to the US, to the US Communities Purchasing Cooperative, a division of Omnia Partners for the Local Parks and Recreation Fund, LPRF Grant.
You were, you were correct. It was actually US Communities.
Oh.
So.
All right.
You did right. Yes, Mayor and Council, we're finally to the point of purchasing the equipment for the new playground. Once you approve this resolution, I will submit an email with the EPO. The reason why this is a kind of sensitive, time-sensitive issue is because on March fifteenth, their prices will raise to over fifty thousand dollars increase. And we're trying to save as much money as we can, so we don't want to, you know, bother with another increase because they have been really kind to keep the original pricing that we had. So we're looking at approximately five hundred forty-seven thousand, eleven dollars and seventy-one cents. And this is just like purchasing through a co-op like the state. So there's no reason for us to have to bid it out. Now, after this is done, we do have to bid out the actual construction of the project. So that is going to be in Sunday's paper. And a couple of weeks after that, we'll open, we'll be waiting on the equipment to get here, and hopefully by the end of school, we will have a playground.
Two things I'd like to add. It will be in Sunday's paper if the council approves it tonight. Number one. Number two, another reason this is, this was an, an addition is, as you all know, we mentioned at one of the last meetings, last one or two meetings, the fact we've been waiting to get the, the plan stamped by an engineer. And that was finally done this last week, and then we're wait, we were waiting for TDAC to come back and look at the plans and give us the okay to go ahead. And we've got that just recently. So that's why we went ahead and added, figured we don't need to wait. We've been waiting long enough for this. Let's get moving.
Yes, thank you, Chris.
Thank you. All right, I will entertain a motion for resolution three one two seven.
Second.
Yeah, a motion to approve by Councilmember Hilton and a second by Vice Mayor Chauncey. Do we have any discussion? I see done. Roll call, Ms. Middleton.
Vice Mayor Chauncey.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton.
Yes.
Councilmember Witt.
Yes.
Mayor Williams.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item G, discussion of the tentative agenda items for March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one council meeting. Under our whole business, we will have ordinance number eleven forty-five and ordinance of the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee to amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-one operating budget. Ordinance number eleven twenty-nine for various expenditures in the general fund and drug fund using fund balance. Those would be the second and final reading. Do we have any discussion, Council? See none. Next would be item B, an unnumbered resolution, approval of temporary special event beer permit at Camp Jordan Arena for Randy Carpenter Benefit Concert. Yes, sir?
Uh, yes, Mayor Council, Randy Carpenter, the owner of Family Concessions, is applying for a temporary beer permit to serve during the Jimmy Buffett concert at Camp Jordan. The Chattanooga Firefighters Association is having a, a benefit concert. I mean, it's Jimmy Buffett, and that's what he's applying for. It will be inside the arena.
You're saying Jimmy Buffett's going to be here?
No, I wish, but it's, I guess, like a cover band. It's a tribute band.
You said it twice, so I'm going to say Jimmy Buffett coming.
Jimmy Buffett tribute, tribute band.
Awesome.
And with that, if I may, real quick, the, with this band and everything they are following, they have to follow our COVID protocols and everything else, distancing and all that. It's on the organizers and everybody else to make sure that they follow what the protocols are on the day of the concert.
Correct.
Awesome. Any questions, Council? I see none. I, I have, we have no new business, so I'll go around and see is, so anyone like to add anything? Any items to the tentative agenda for the twenty-fifth?
Uh, yes, Mayor. With your and the council's permission, I'd like to add discussion and possible take action in regards to a construction of a dog park.
All right, sir. Do that. Have any questions, Council? Think Mr. Dorsey alluded to a little bit about that. Do you would like to?
I don't have anything else this time.
Anything this time? Okay. All right. Anyone else? Awesome. Thank you, everyone. We enjoy having everyone back. It's a little light, but maybe we'll get more participation as we move along. But thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. Hope everyone has a great evening. Meeting is adjourned.